I call the meeting to order for plaid allegiance, please.
Plaid allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands on a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Since I got a dirty look from the village board, wait a minute. All right, roll call, please.
Barry?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Quillen?
Here.
Do we have the minutes from the September 22 meeting?
I'll cover it for you.
Okay. We have two. Any additions, violations, additions? So it's October 13th and September 42nd. If not, there's a motion.
Are they together in one?
I don't know if there's a change, but I need to make a motion.
Yes, we have two minutes. Together, they may pass.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll do acceptable.
Okay. I made a motion on October 13th.
Second.
A motion on October 13th and there is a second. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Barry?
Yes.
Aaron?
Substate.
Meyer?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Quillen?
Yes, same.
And then September 22nd?
So move. Second.
Motion on the corner is a second. Any questions or comments to the motion? Roll call.
Quillen?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Cooper?
Substate.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Barry?
Substate.
And for the record, today is October 27, 2013. Village Board, your report.
The only thing I have is tax income since the last board meeting, $141,27,7 cents. But I also wanted to mention, I want to try and get the board together, put a photograph for the website for one of the upcoming meetings. I wanted to try and do it tonight, but I didn't get a response from all the board members. So in an upcoming meeting, if I can send an email out so I can schedule a photographer to come in, if you guys can let me know, you know, if you can make the meeting, it'll probably be like the second meeting of the month like this one. So if the business is still on their meeting, I'll give you heads up the week before, if you guys can let me know so that I can try to come out.
Can we shoot for the 24th? Because I think hopefully we'll be in the building on the 24th. So just a consensus for now, something else will come up.
Yeah.
So far, we're on the 24th. And you read from the agenda, I think they have Jeanette Swarren, our department police officer. Sure, please, sir. Would you like to introduce him?
Pardon me?
Would you like to introduce him?
I don't know his first name.
Christopher Maya.
She's what I'm introducing.
I'll introduce him because his name is spelled Mayo Hoyt, but it's pronounced Maya. Come on, Chris.
Oh, thanks. Thanks for the thought.
We hired Chris October of last year. He went to the academy. He just graduated this year, and he's now entered in the field training process and will be official. Swarren, in here.
I was talking about the plaque, please. May I join him, repeat after me? I am station eight.
I, Christopher Gomner.
Having been appointed to the position of police officer.
Having been appointed to the position of police officer.
In the village of Beecher.
In the village of Beecher.
In the town of Blue.
In the county of Blue.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of police officer.
The position of police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. I just need to say that to you. I'll get a copy of this, we'll go on to you and have one for some of you.
Thank you, sir.
If my memory serves me correct, Chris is a U.S. Army veteran?
Yes, sir.
Served two tours on Iraq, now he's with us.
Thanks, sir.
And before we go into the recognition of audience, Beecher has always been, well, lack of better words, famous or popular for the sporting events that they've had and the progress that we've made with the students and so on and so forth. And in the last couple of weeks, I've had the pleasure of having knowledge of first Georgia, thank you, my mind just won't play. Georgie Weiskirber, who took a silver medal for Team USA representing the United States Beecher-Washingtonship in Ireland, if I remember?
That's correct.
Yeah, in Ireland, and she took a silver medal, and that's quite an accomplishment. And second, from what I understand, the Beecher High School golf team went to state, and which that has never happened before, and they took ninth. And then Michael Barber, yes, he is related, took fifth in the state, which I think is an accomplishment, and I'd just like to take a moment just to applaud him. I'll care of this, I'm sure.
I want to mention that Jesse Hatman took 25th in the girls.
I'm sorry.
Jesse Hatman took 25th in the girls, that's amazing.
Thank you. Thank you. Honestly, it doesn't make a difference where you place, it's how you play, represent Beecher, and that's most important, but obviously, we're proud of the accomplishments that everybody did make there. Recognition of audience, today we have the Preserves of Cardinal Creek Homeowners Association here that would like to address the board.
My name is Suzie Ann DeRbarris, I'm president of the Preserves of Cardinal Creek Maintenance Association, that's our homeowners association and company. We have a letter that we sent to the board for consideration, we're seeking release of funds set aside for our association for various improvements that we'd like to make to our subdivision. I don't know if I need to expound on that, but...
The letter is in our packet, and Bob and I have had a couple of conversations with the homeowners association about what they want to do. With that being in mind, what we're looking for tonight is a motion to authorize the village administrator and I to expend up to, not to exceed, $70,000, at which time, if that's approved, then we will sit down with their attorney and our attorney and the group itself, and then we'll work out how we spend those funds, and then go from there.
There is support for the spirit of what they want to do, but there is some legal issues with how it would cost them. Our attorney's having some issues with maybe spending private property. We have to do that.
We had probably an hour conversation with them, so that's what we're looking for, a motion to the...
Some moves?
Some move?
I'll make a motion to allow the village president and the village administrator to administer the distribution of $70,000 of developers' escrow funds for improvements in the subdivision of the Preserve of Cardinal Creek.
Is motion number four, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any questions or comments?
I think... Bob, can you tell me how much money is in that escrow account?
We have 130 left.
After you take out the 70?
No, we would have 60 left if we take out the 70. There's two things left that we have to do that I'm aware of, one is we have to back throughout the sewer sewers, clean the sewer sewers. And then the second thing we have to do is there's a chance to go in by a lift station at night, or never finish correctly. Other than those two items, I don't know what else we would have to do after that.
Yes. And one of the big things we were waiting on was for it to finish that last year, that's done, taken care of.
The concern I have is you're, you need to get an understanding of what portions of what they want to do would be acceptable, that would be not private property, to be able to fix what that value's going to be. By saying you're going at $70,000, you're kind of giving the residents the wrong impression that there's $70,000 available for them to go after. That's what worries me. I think you should at least be getting an opinion from the village attorney based on what they want to do, what would be achievable if you did it all with an acceptable point.
We have, that's why the village attorney has suggested if we approved not to exceed, and then we would sit down with him and we would work those issues out. The $70,000 figure is coming from, if you go back to the agreement?
Well, go back to the original list of improvements that the letter of credit covered. There were two on there that, one was a diesel ball, and one was steel asphalt, and those two items totaled $7,000, which we said that we didn't have to do, and the residents said they didn't want at that time. That was back 2011? So that was where that $70,000 was spent.
But you're saying we didn't have to do it to begin?
No, we chose not to do it. We have the right to do it because they were on the blueprints that were approved for the project, and the letter of credit included those two items.
But through the discussion, they've indicated they don't want that. That's where we're getting the $70,000 from, and they've submitted the list, like we've said, just to reiterate, is the attorney needs to sit down with them and discuss and explain exactly what you just said, and then we will work it out. We're not even sure if we're going to get to that $70,000, but we picked a figure so that we don't exceed it with this meeting. Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Barry?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Quillen?
Yes.
I have one comment to make, but who wrote the paper? Excellent piece of work. I'm like, I don't know how I'm going to sell this to the board, when I have this paper, I'm like, oh. I assume your attorney?
Yes.
Okay. I need you to get in touch with Tim Piper and work these issues out.
I attempted to reach out to him and didn't get a response back, so I will keep trying and hopefully...
He was probably waiting for tonight's meeting for contact, and we'll see what these people have to do, but okay. We will get ahold of both of you and sit down and have a meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And we have our auditors here tonight.
Just go on.
Auditor.
Just go on.
Sorry, I'm talking to you. The auditor representing the auditors.
That's correct. I'm Marcie Holberg, I want to thank you for having the phone back for the beginning of the audit. I want to take, I'm hoping just about to have a little seat or time tonight to go through a little of the highlights, so if you've got your blue auditors there, I'm going to touch on probably about six or eight of her pages, and then if you've got questions, I will attempt to answer them, so. Do you begin on page one, it is the independent auditor's report, I just want to let you know this is a standard audit, so there were no modifications, outpatients, so everything was good that we saw, no problems that we had to report to. On page three is an overall snapshot of the village as of April 13th. The governmental activities are all of your funds except for water, sewer, and refuse. Those are in the business type activity account, so in total, the village had $36 million in assets as of the end of the year. Now, 32 and a half million of that was in your property, plant, equipment, the water plants, sewer plants, all of your buildings, equipment, et cetera, vehicles, all of that. So you had about 3.5 million in cash and receivables and other due tos, or due from governments from the state and that. You had about 2.5 million of liabilities at the end of the year, the majority of that is in your long-term debt, between your bonds and some loans. And 32.6 million in net position, meaning your leftover, your assets plus your liabilities, 30,000 of that is tied to your property and equipment, 2.1 million is unrestricted, the balance that is restricted for various items, either through tax levies or covenants, that type of thing, like the preserved balance that you were just talking about, that's restricted for other use, so that is in restrictions. On page four is your overall incoming expenses for the year. The governmental activities, again, everything but water, sewer, and refuse. Towards the middle and towards the right, the third column from the right, towards the middle of the page, it shows your net expense. Your governmental activities take 2.6 million dollars. Net expense, meaning your property tax and sales tax, income tax, various items, have to cover that 2.6 million dollars. So overall, your governmental net loss was $305,000 for the year. Your business type activities, you had a net loss of $214,000 during the year. Comparing that to last year, you did that loss increase in both categories there. There are, you bought the property at 625, that comes out as an expense, so there's various things going on in the village that caused that. If you flip to page six, exhibit D, shows your general fund, which does include the 625 Dixie Highway account. Your general fund had a small profit for the year, $16,000. Your field fund lost about $6,000 for the year. All of your other governmental funds lost $250,000 for the year. If you flip to page, right down the page number here, G, exhibit G, page nine, that is your water sewer and your refuse funds. Your water and sewer fund get combined on this schedule, you can see more detail in the back, but your water sewer fund brought in 1.1 million, spent 1.4 before depreciation and, I'm sorry, before interest and before your utility tax income. So overall, the, that fund lost 206,000, it did transfer out 95,000, so before the transfer, you lost 111,000. Your refuse fund had an income before transfers of 14,000 and transferred out 24, so you lost about 10. Good news, and the water sewer fund is your utility tax was up about 20,000 over last year, so that utility tax is coming on and hopefully will continue.
Cold winter.
Yes, and it's supposed to be another cold winter, so...
Yeah, it still crosses on the other end.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does, so...
I'll take the warm one.
You'll take the warm winter. Couple things in this one, your contractual services were up in the water and sewer fund. Some of that was due to the master plan that you're working on, some of it was insurance, and Bob was just sharing with me, the workman's comp insurance again this year, so workman's comp insurance from '13 to '14 had gone up, and that is reflected in these numbers.
You had one in...
And you're one, yeah?
I remember right now.
Yes, yes. I believe you did. So, yeah, your repair and maintenance, that would have been in, repair and maintenance wasn't up terribly well before, but that was in there. If you go to page 16, is the number of footnote to touch on, your deposits and investments. We talked about this a little bit last year, your investment policy requires collateralization at 110% of funds that are not collateralized by, we're not under FDIC, and you're well within that, you're at about 124% collateralization, so the money's over the 250,000 of FDIC insurance, the bank is providing about 2.2 million in collateral to cover those deposits, so you're well within your policy there. If you go to page 26, I want to point out, down the road here, IMRF, and I believe I touched on this last year, just giving you a heads up, your IMRF schedule of funding process, the progress, for December 13, it's showing that you were unfunded, you had an unfunded AAL, it's an unfunded liability for retirement of $565,000. Not this next year, but in two years, your April 30 of 2016 financial statements, we will be required to report whatever that number is at the moment as a liability on the financial statements. It's a number that all of us in Illinois particularly are aware of, that the pension funds are unfun, you know, underfunded, and that they're starting to require us in the next year and a half or so, so we'll get hit with it next year, and then the following year for villages, to report that as a liability. So your fund balance will drop significantly in the year, and we have to put that in and start recording that, so they're just wanting it public to be more aware, and if it's in the footnote disclosure, they may not see it, or if it's on the face of the financial statements, people are seeing that.
This unfunded liability, do you try amongst all funds, or do you place it on general? Where would you put that?
I would probably place it based on salaries, percentage based on salaries, right? Whoever's paying a diagonal F, you know, because now everyone is...
So standard reports are predating requirement of having a fund balance over 500, it's basically unachievable.
It will be down the road. Now, whether or not they adjust for this, because they all, all the bond comes, all rating services know that this is coming on, it's new, and you guys at 565,000 are sitting pretty good with numbers that I see.
There's a lot of them that are worse.
Oh, there's a lot that are worse, a lot that are in a lot worse shape.
But still, if you take, let's say, even 250 of that in bike in general, and we're sitting with 600 in general, thinking we look at the standard reports we've been having.
Exactly. And like I said, standard reports may adjust for this, because it's affecting every governmental entity across the nation. It's not just Illinois, it's across the nation that is waiting to be reported, start reporting this.
We were proud of our double A+. We knew when we got it, how long we were...
Well, it's not the last. Right, right, and this kind of thing doesn't help, but like I said, hopefully, they will make some adjustments for that, because they see this number anyway, they get this report, and they know that that number's out there, even though it's not recorded, so if you're in a way...
The problem is that our liability is worse, once it's on the front sheet.
Once it's on the front, yes, and your fund balance...
So I mean, there's a lot of other municipalities that are going to be even further than we are.
That's correct, so relatively, we'd be even better off.
Right.
We might be getting A+ plus plus.
Yeah, and like I said, standard reports knows that this liability's out there, and they probably affected that in any way, but yes, if they're required to maintain a fund balance of, and you don't, then it's, but they may adjust that because of these liabilities coming on board, so. As I said, it won't be next year, but it'll be April of 16 that will affect you guys, so I wanted to make you aware of that. Then on to page 40, just wanted to touch base in the water and sewer fund, this is more detail, like I said, on the front, we combine water and sewer, just to make you aware, the water fund has been running in deficit, the charges for the water fund are not covering all of the expenses that are charged to it, and there are some water charges, like the workman's comp insurance, that the water fund is essentially paying all of...
I think water and water.
It's already a quarter, okay. And that split, you know, among funds, there may not be exactly appropriate based on salaries, but there are some charges there, but the expense, or the income coming in is not covering the expenses, and I know you've got the increase each year, but you may down the road, you may be looking at that just to see what's going on there. Sewer fund is holding its own, so that is the good news there. On the next page, so we're not so good news, shows your EAB over the last six years, and it is dropping somewhat significantly. I mean, back in 2090, you were at 124 million, you're down to 96, almost 97 million. I know you guys have also made provisions and have some incentives now for homeowners to be buying a building, so hopefully that will bring that up. The good news is you kept your tax extension about the same with the past three years, around 675,000, so even though the assessed valuation is falling, you're holding that levy where you would like it, with the amount that you need to have. The balance of the report and all the footnotes in that that I skipped is more detail, and there is more detail at the back of all of the items in the front, so if you have got questions or need some more information, you can look to those. The other couple of things you have in front of you, we did have a management recommendation letter, and it just concerned some of the funds and how they're being kept and recorded or not on the general ledger system, so if you've got questions on that, I can address it, I think we laid it out pretty well there, and it's somewhat a repeat of what we've been saying, it's just...
There are two big issues in the management letter, one is the fact that, and Kurt always used to beat us up on it, we never, the board never changed their mind on how they want to do it, we have, we have a capital fund and a debt service fund, and what they want is to eliminate those funds, at least have a water fund and sewer fund, because it takes them more time to break those out in the water and sewer, okay? We do it that way, so we don't spend the money. When it goes into the debt fund, it's for debt, when it goes into the capital fund, it's for capital, and it doesn't get commingled without the reliance. So there are two philosophical differences there, and what else you decide is that. It's not illegal to do what you're doing, it's just not a generally accepted common person.
And it does take us some time to roll things back, but that's it, so it'd be...
She doesn't complain about this bunch of Kurt.
Yeah, well, I figured out how to deal with it a little bit easier than Kurt did. I did it more on the computer on our system, and Kurt did it a little bit more by hand, so I'm like, I've got it, that it's not terrible, but it's still a little bit of time.
The other thing that warrants some discussion, and it's not something made to be right away, and I think it was discussed last year, is the auditors have a serious problem with some of our larger accounts being off the grid. Offline, off the grid, they're not part of the general ledger, and we set them up that way because of the uniqueness and complexity of our accounts, and 4th of July is the one we're really worried about soon.
Fourth of July, and the two developer escrow accounts are offline and have quite a bit of money now, it sounds like it's coming down.
It's very easy to throw the developer ones into the ledger, because there's very little activity that goes on there. Fourth of July, however, is a beast, and I don't know how to deal with that one, because over the Fourth of July weekend, the number of deposits that are made, everything is just unbelievable, and I don't know how to handle it. Internal controls with that.
And we just point out, because, and I told Bob last week, we talked a little bit, unfortunately, just in the past three weeks, we've had one of our small clients, and there's a prior situation going on, and it's because there's one person basically running the fund, and I'm not saying this is happening here at all, I don't want to, you know, point fingers or anything, hopefully it's not happening, hopefully it never will, but when one person is in charge of a fund and there's not much external reporting, things can happen. Unfortunately, we found it again, and as I said, it kind of rears its ugly net every year, year and a half with different people that you would never expect, so just again to point out, and I did put numbers in here so you can see how many dollars we're talking about, it's in the Fourth of July one is the big one. Yeah, and we could help you try to figure something out if you're interested in getting that, you know, to the general ledger system and tracking it there. The other thing, if you just have a lot of small funds, and I told Bob, I said to us, we deal with materiality, because we are seeing that the financial statements are materially correct, we're not saying they're perfect, we're saying they're materially correct, but if I, you know, I sat on school board for 20 years, and I know what the auditors consider material, and what you would get yelled at if something would happen to you, are two completely different numbers, you know, and I said, if something happens to $1,000, are you going to care about it? Is it 10,000, or is it, you know, 50,000, I'd be on materiality. You know, as school board member, I'm sitting there, and the public's not going to say, oh, well, it's 50,000, it's not a big deal, you know, they're going to want to know, hey, somebody took $1,000 and took that, you're going to hear about it. So we just wanted to point out to you, you know, that these things are not, some of them are not in the financials at all, those are the smaller ones, and then there are the six larger ones that do roll into the financial statements, but really don't have much control during the year from the board's perspective. They have all the controls in the world, at the commission level and that, but you guys aren't seeing the activity through the general ledger system and having those other reconciliations and double checks on, so that's why I didn't want that up.
Just want to point, the spending of the builders' accounts, that's every dollar spent on the builders' accounts to approve by this board, nothing leaves without us approving it, so...
Right, but...
There are some checks there.
Yes, there are, and there are some in some of those other, it's just that the general ledger, you know, you're approving, and that's what I'm kind of saying, is you're approving what you're aware of, if it's not in the general ledger system, if it's offline, there could be some expenditures going on that you're not aware of that are just going out the door, and until we come in and take a look at it at the end of the year, you know, you may have approved everything that you know of, and again, not saying this is happening at all, but there could be something that gets written that you didn't know about, and you're not seeing it in the general ledger, you only see the financial statements at the end of the year, and by then, you know, maybe too late or whatever, so...
The village board is ultimately responsible for any expenditure that is approved, and you have a right to vote on those. I don't care what commission it is, and that's what she keeps telling us, but we, when we set up that system, wanted to give the commission some autonomy, because volunteers, you know, fine, you volunteer, but we're going to tell you what to do, and we're concerned about that as well. So it's sticky with you, you know? I don't know how to solve it, I think we have a good system of internal control in place on those accounts. Jim does share with whoever transaction that does occur, we want those accounts on his report, but they're, they're after the fact.
Do you want to add a quick question? From an audit point of view, is there any difference in the source of funding and the requirements for reporting? On one hand, you've got tax, you've got people, the tax side is funding the village, but in the case of the Fourth of July, because it's totally self-funded, is the festival itself, which is not really a tax... really a taxpayer payment.
Right.
Is there any difference in your viewpoint of how, what reporting should be done?
Not if the village, not if the village board is responsible for it. If the village board is ultimately responsible for it, the recording and all of that isn't. That's why we pulled that village, you know, the Fourth of July into here and that. And that's, they're ultimately responsible. If they're comfortable, you know, letting it be the way it is, that's fine. We're just going to continue to point out, we don't think that's best practice. And that's fine. We don't have to agree, but we just want to point out so that you know, because board members do turn over and we don't know when, you know, things are brought up and that.
In other words, if we keep it the same way over here and give us.
Keep it the same way? You're going to get this letter every year and maybe have some different things added, whatever? And it's fine if that's what, but we just want you guys to be aware. Because like I said, I sat in your position on a school board and I know what I deem as material for this audit is a lot different than if I'm sitting over there and saying, but what if?
You're referring to maybe a student activity account where someone took away the refresh.
Student activity account or anything, yeah. The band boosters or whatever, you know, it's different. What the auditor's going to look at and what you guys may deem as, wait a minute, the public's going to be upset because. So we just want to point it out. You can continue the way you are. That's fine. As I said, we just wanted to point that out.
Before I follow, you described that perhaps reporting annual information or maybe selected information might satisfy. In other words, is it possible to structure something that is all the detail every month? That some kind of selected or summarized information could be general in the ledger?
Did you get that or didn't? Was that, oh, from, well, I'm just saying that this is what the year was for these in total. And no, what we're suggesting, Kim, is in those six accounts that are included in the financial, we would strongly suggest you get those into the general ledger system. And I know Jeanette's going to kill you because I don't want six more account, you know, six more funds to worry about.
I gave her a heads up.
You know, but those are running some significant money. Like I said, the developer escrow though are racheting down. You know, if you're going to spend this thirty, you're going to be down to sixty or whatever left in there. But it is still village money. Yes, you are seeing those, hopefully seeing all those bills as they're coming. But you don't know for certain unless they're running through the system essentially into the year. So those six larger ones, we strongly suggest that's around the financials anyway, that they really should be in the general ledger. And I know one of those is Fourth of July. And as I said, we could help you try to come up with some ways to do that if you choose to put them into the general ledger. The other seven accounts are smaller. There's not a lot of activity, but again, what we consider a lot of activity and what some of, what one of your residents might consider and, you know, start coloring about are two different things also. So as I said, we could help come up with some ways to make, you know, this work if we, if you guys choose to get it in the general ledger system, try to make it as painless as possible on both sides. And I know Bob, you said, you know, those commissions want to spend money when they want to spend money. If they decide they want to go paint a tree, they don't necessarily want it to come and wait for the village to approve. You know, so we could maybe help try to work through those things too. So as it's just our suggestion and again, it's two and a half weeks ago and we're, it's ugly head again. And unfortunately, it's going to keep happening. You know, I've got one of my clients kicking themselves and I said, you know, we can't live our lives. Sometimes auditors feel like we are, we can't live our lives not trusting anyone. But when that kind of thing happens, you go, ooh, are we into too trusty, you know? So we just, again, want to point it out. You guys can do what you want, but we want to point it out because we don't want you coming back in six months saying, well, wait a minute, somebody, well, you know, we told you, well, two might be possible.
Yeah, we have, and I know that any expenditure, we've talked about this too, we have any check that's written on two signatures. I don't care what commission it is.
I don't tell you the one that just appeared as ugly head, two signatures.
So there were two people involved.
I hate dual signature. I really do as an auditor and it's where we tell people too. I, Bob and I are the signatures. Bob signs the checks thinking, I'm going to look at whatever we're supposed to look at. I've signed it because when Bob signed it, he must have looked at it. Nobody ends up looking at it. So it's kind of hard. And then if something happens, you're going like this, well, who you were supposed to, no, I was supposed to. As auditors, we really don't like dual signature. They will tell you that that's a good thing, but what we found is nobody's doing anything and you're just pointing fingers then. So, but again, that's up to you guys.
Well, you just wiped that eternal control.
Yes, I mean, because, because what we find, Bob, is it really isn't a control because, as I said, you're sitting there talking, writing, signing the checks and you pass it over to me and I'm talking and I sign them and nobody looks at the supporting documents for that or says, well, here's the list. It was supposed to be paid. I'm only going to sign those because I've already signed them. It must be okay. You know, so.
Well, I don't sign any of that.
Yeah, I know you don't, but just for instance, you know, if you and I are on a board together, it's supposed to be doing. You know, I trust you, you trust me and nobody.
Yeah, treasurer, deputy treasurer, the mayor and finance chair, the four signatures.
Like I said, dual signature sounds like a really good control, but we find it normally doesn't work. And a lot of times when there is fraud, it's in a dual signature required, in dual signature environment because everybody thought everybody else was doing something.
Well, I think the other reason for the dual signature is that the person who's got the final, the original signature can't just dump the entire finances of the village into one check and walk out the door. The dual signature force, if that is a, is a point of delineation of board responsibility, you can't, one person can't have ultimate control. But I can see where you're saying it. If someone's not really checking everything.
Someone's not really checking everything. And the other thing is depending on your bank, a lot of times the banks don't even look for the second signature. You know, some of the bigger banks, the smaller banks tend to be better with that. The bigger banks, doesn't matter. They don't know that there's supposed to be two signatures even though there's two lines because it doesn't necessarily mean there's supposed to be two. So you've just got to watch. I mean, everybody's got to look, do your monitoring, watch the reports, ask questions. You know, when things look funny, because if they look funny, they probably are funny. You know, if you don't, you know, if you don't have a good feeling about something, it's probably because you shouldn't have a good feeling about it. You know, just all those things that, as I said, we're a sadly head. Everybody goes, yep, yep, we thought something like to go online and there probably is. So if you've got any concerns, you know, ask questions. Anything I can answer for you?
I thought Kurt, I thought Kurt was negative.
Like I said, it just reared up a head to you, but you do, you, you know.
I got one more, Bob. It looks like every, I think I've seen this the last few years, if you always comment on the lack of a management letter that we don't prepare. Could you describe to?
Oh, the empty, the management discussion analysis.
Describe what that is and I think it's something we should do and it's usually, it's usually a, it's a narrative.
Yeah, management discussion analysis, you guys, you do not present in your audited financial statement. It is something, it's a narrative. It's a discussion of this past year and analysis of that past year. It would be something management board would write. We could give you a format, but it needs to come from you guys. The auditors cannot write that. You would discuss things like year-over-year comparisons, year-to-budget or the actual to budget comparisons. If you budgeted X number of dollars and only spent half, why, what happened? A lot of analysis like that. And then at the end, you have an opportunity to tell economic factors that caused concern or caused good things to happen during the year and then going forward. You know, what you're seeing down the road, usually it's limited to the next year unless you've got a couple of your projects going on. It can be anywhere from two or more pages. I, we've got one, one client that writes about twelve pages. You are limited to what you can write, you know, put in there, which we would tell you also because if you stray beyond that, we'd have to modify our report anyway. But it is, it is supposed to tell the reader and your residents in a snapshot what's going on in the village and why certain things happen. Bob would probably be the one writing it. I've not seen, it does not seem to affect, and you could ask fund council on that, it does not seem to affect fund council or standard core ratings if you have it or if you don't. I've not seen it as a good.
In my opinion, it's an exercise in mental illusion is what it is because nobody reads it. You, you write it, you put it in the audit and nobody reads it. The five-year financial plan contains over forty pages of past history and projections. Will we do our five-year financial plan? Maybe that's much more important document than writing about what happened in the last year. We all know, you know, nobody reads it. That's what worries me with the end of the year. I don't know how to do it. If you're going for a G F O A award, you can do it.
Yes, if you're going for an ed certificate of financial achievement award, you have to do it. Most, I'm trying to think, we do about six or seven villages. I mean, Peetown writes, the literature writes. None of our other ones do, so.
I mean, if you want me to, I can. I just.
You know, we would have a format and that, but again, it would, it would just, it would slow things down a little bit. Not that that is a reason not to, but you know, we'd have to get Bob because I have to get him the draft done and then he's got to put together the narrative and then it's got to come back to us so we can approve that the narrative only contains the things that can't approve and then.
You can do it for next year.
Yeah, I mean, if the board.
It's no different than a budget message or a five-year financial plan.
And I, we can, you know, or you get financial details on it. You can show what, what it, you know, since, what George did, and they can kind of look at it and see whether they want to include it or not. So as I said, there's, it's not necessarily hard. It takes some time.
But it just type, it just doesn't mean anything.
Any other questions? Anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. Good. The annual financial report we're working on will be mailed to you this end of the state.
Yeah, is he up to sign it something? The mayor's got to sign it.
He will have to sign the annual financial report.
Okay.
Yeah, so one more thing for you to sign.
And Kim?
And we filed that electronically, so actually you'll sign a piece of paper to tell us it's okay to sign.
You guys can decide if you want them to be made. If you do love the annual review for next year.
And if you decide to, if you can let us know a little bit early because we'll get the format, you know, set up for you too.
And then after I write it, then we'll have a twenty-question pop quiz.
There we go. Of what it contains.
Because no one's going to read it.
No other questions? Thank you very much. And if you've got questions at all that pop up during the year, let us know. All right.
Thanks.
Bye.
Finance administration, Mr. Stewart.
I make a motion accepting the audit for the fiscal year ending on April thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen.
Motion on the court. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Wait.
Yes.
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 Yes. The hundred fifty thousand dollar loan for the, from First Community Bank and Trust for the Pennsyl Engineering, Street Engineering was closed on October fifteenth. It's going to be made with automatic withdrawals. I'll straighten out the budget for structure, just to let everybody know. And Bob, five year?
Yep, we're working on it. The numeric crunching is done and now the taxes being.
And we're going to have a little bit of something?
Oh, yeah.
Getting.
I was hoping to get this thing done before we move because one of those things I need to worry about when I can't find my files. Something needs done now. It would be a ninety-day period there where we would be.
That is our report.
You've owed buildings and properties, parks and recreation, fifty million.
Yes, we need to pay a bill out of our six twenty-five Dixie Highway account. I'd like to make a motion. This is to American Security Cabinets. It's the drop box after hours. It's for six hundred and eighty-one dollars. Like to make that motion to pay that bill.
So moved.
Motion and there was a second. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Clear.
Yes.
Aaron?
No.
Meyer?
Yes.
Yes. No. Yes. Stan's the six twenty-five Dixie Highway. It looks great. I was up there today. All that remains to be done. The general contractor, the painting should be, the wall should have been done today. I think all he has to do yet is paint the frame around the door between the conference room and the floor. So he's going to spray paint that, I guess, with oil base paint and that should be it, but it looks great. You guys have been in there. Really looks nice. Very, a very good job. Furniture's going to be installed October thirty-first. The vinyl tile will be waxed and windows washed and blinds installed. Phone system is to be installed on November thirteen. Flight poles are up, still need to be lifted. The outside canopy is complete. I believe he was out there in the last, as far as the painting of the canopy. Did he?
Yeah, they're painting. No, they're, that's an ongoing project.
Okay, because he was on the east, east side when I was there.
Yeah.
Still had the south side one. That looks good. You know, if you look at the finished side, it looks better than the green and white. As the chief said, it looks like a restaurant up there. It's, it's going to be good as far as the canopy. The major obstacle left is the technology upgrades and how they mesh with our current systems and operations. We can only work those bugs out after we move. We're planning the first meeting on November twenty-fourth and we'll see how it goes. But the move is planning for the, what'd you say, seventh, eighth? When's the move?
Open, yeah.
Open for the.
That's a switch over, actually, maybe on the fourteenth or fifteenth.
Okay. All right, so it's in full swing. Looks like the sign poles were put up also for the sign. The sign's going to be installed right, probably the same day or the day before we move. Pictick Pavilion Bear Stand in Fireman's Park construction update.
There's been a lot of climbing, hammering, nailing. Actually, as of last weekend, we believe the only thing we have left as far as the structure itself goes is the sap at the south end. And next weekend would be the rope that go along, the actual tin rope. It's amazing of what probably a total of ten volunteers have done over what, three weeks' time. And there's been non-commission members out there helping us as well. It's, it's, I think it's pretty amazing. And as always, we always thank the volunteers for helping us.
It is amazing. Looks like, felt like that, that building's never going to go anywhere.
It is a huge project.
It is.
For volunteers.
Man, you have a nice view of the village when you get up to it.
Oh, Dan, you were up there?
Close, close enough.
Okay. I didn't think they'd let you go over the eight-foot ladder.
Right, close enough.
Okay. All right, garage doors, are they going on in the spring probably?
Garage doors, it's either the spring or after the Fourth of July, depending upon financial situation.
Okay. All right, sounds good. That ends my report.
Thank you. The planning and building is on the trust here.
Billing department, how they report was supposed for your review. Give you a P D C C update. After public hearing, P D C C did not have a quorum that evening, so consensus among the people who were in tenant recommend approval for special use permit subject to conditions as listed below. And they were the five that are listed. Due to the sale of Alphacaw, the proposed seating area should be fenced in with a gate access or controlled access to the area. Outdoor seating should be also handicapped accessible. Hours of operations of the patio should be limited to ten P M. on Sunday through Thursday and eleven on Friday and Saturday. No outdoor entertainment unless the special use permit is granted by the village board for a specific event and lighting shall not shine onto adjoining properties. Since the hearing was conducted on Thursday, there was insufficient time for the attorney to prepare the ordinance and it will be placed on the agenda for November twenty-fourth. The land use plan update, the final grant agreement has been approved by I D. Are required to obtain competitive pricing on the use of the consultant for the land use plan. This is being done and we hope to begin the process by next month.
There is a possibility we have to refer the deck back to the P D C. And we will discuss that in a minute. We did not have a quorum for hearing and now I have a legal opinion that said a hearing and a half will recur. So we have to send it back.
He's got plenty of time yet. He said he's not.
They'll be building in the winter.
Yeah. That should be fine. That was my report.
Public safety trustee, Paul.
Yeah, police department monthly report is enclosed. Co-enforcement monthly report is also enclosed. Police department planning use of the village hall space. Several board members have asked how the police department will utilize the new space once the village hall moves to six twenty-five Dixie. The chief, you want to help us out here?
Well, actually, we have some rooms for record storage and storage. What we're planning on doing is moving the administration portion of the police department up to where the old village hall is. We're expanding the police department so the detectives will have their own station, their own office. We're also, what, what was originally an interview. We're also, what, what was originally an interview room was converted to an office. We're going to convert that back to an interview room now. So it'll give us more space to actually talk with people when they come in to report a crime or report a problem, instead of just standing in the lobby or going into our lunchroom. We've got space to do that. Um, we're also expanding so that we can store our records. Right now, they're in boxes in the garage. We're actually going to categorize them, because certain records we have to keep for eighty years, like arrest records, we can't purge those, we can't destroy them. Also, our firearms, our firearms ammunition, right now, they're included in our evidence room. So our evidence room, you pretty much need, you need to be Spider-Man to get around in there, because there's no room to walk, there's no place to go. So once we move our equipment out of there, we'll have more room for evidence. I think it's just going to give us a lot more room. You might think nine hundred and seventy-five square foot addition to what we have is not much, but it's going to greatly improve our conditions, especially for records. And that's the biggest problem I have right now, because sometimes it takes me a day to find, archive their old records, because they could be here or there, and I don't know where they are. But this way, we're going to get them categorized, and we're going to have everything in order.
Any questions, Chief?
Edward. Um, where is your, your office going to be? It's going to be in the old village hall?
Yes.
And Linda will be up there too, so.
That is correct.
Okay.
And then Lieutenant Emerson will be up there, Code Enforcement will also be up there.
What are you going to do with the existing west door?
The exist.
The existing police station access right now?
Uh, that's going to be for bonding, prisoner bonding, plus night shift, because the, the administration, we're not going to have that open during the, the nighttime. So it'll just still be used just as it normally is, if you want to come out and, and either see an officer or meet with a detective. And it gives us flexibility. If, if it doesn't work, we'll try something else, but right now, just the addition of that square footage, like, my number one thing is records and equipment, and get it all organized. Because right now, you come down there and look, nothing is organized. And this is going to be a major improvement for us, and it's going to take some work to organize it, but I'll feel a lot better too.
Okay, Chief. Uh, Ebola virus scare. There's been quite a bit of media coverage on the Ebola virus. The chief event should be placed on the agenda, so he can explain what he knows and how the state and county and village would react in the event the threat becomes real in our area. Chief?
Well, what we've done is we've, uh, reviewed our S. O. P. for, uh, H. One N. One pandemic. We're just going to go off of that protocol, should something happen. I'm pretty confident that it's not going to happen, because what I've learned about Ebola, and what I know about Ebola, it's going to be awful rare, I'm just, it's my prediction, for someone to contract it. Even though it is a viral, um, infection, you can only contract it through bodily fluids, and it's only contracted from someone that has Ebola and that has symptoms. So they're only contagious when they're symptomatic. When they're not symptomatic, even if they come over here from either Guinea or Liberia, if they don't have the symptoms, they're not contagious. It's only when they have the symptoms, and like I said, it's got to be a bodily fluid. It's not just breathing. I know that one nurse that contracted it, uh, she went on a cruise, she went to a bowling alley, she went a lot of places, and nobody contracted, uh, the virus. Proper personal protective equipment, like our officers are going to have a video on, uh, if you deal with a potential patient of Ebola, it's important for the mask and the gloves. Again, it's, it's fluids, it's the bodily fluids that you've got to be careful of. We're coming into flu season now, and the symptoms of the flu are very similar to Ebola. So how do you know the difference? Well, if you haven't been to one of these countries in Africa, and you haven't been in contact with anyone with Ebola from one of these countries, you probably got the flu. So, uh, you know, the Illinois Department of Public Health has a, uh, eight-hundred number that's manned twenty-four hours. I didn't know if I brought that number with me today or not. It's a, a hotline, it's, uh, eight-hundred-eight-eight-nine-three-nine-three-one, and that's the Illinois Department of Public Health. And that is, uh, twenty-four hours, seven days a week. It's an Ebola hotline. And if anyone has any other questions, I can try to answer them. I'm not a doctor, but what I know about it, I feel pretty confident about not contracting the virus.
No questions of the chief? Chief, any other comments?
Yes, I do, I just want to share with you a card I received from a resident here. Um, this is dated, uh, October seventeenth. It says, "Dear Chief, this notice to recognize one of your officers, Officer Ryan Hopkins. He was patrolling in our subdivision a few weeks ago, and noticed our dog was limping in the yard. He stopped and told us that his dog had a similar injury. It was a torn A. C. L., and advised us about a special brace that he found online that helped his dog a great deal. I went to the site, ordered the brace, and she is doing much better. Too often, there is only negative publicity about officers, and I want to recognize him in a positive way." This is from Barbara. So when we're out there patrolling, we do make contact, and we do help whenever we can.
Just want to make one comment. The two W. s of definition of the hero, the students of the junior high, sixth grade, two sixth graders were in Mrs. Hodak's class, their social studies class, and they had to write about heroes. And who was their hero, and the, these two students had picked out the Police Department for what they did. So again, it shows that the police contact is really, it is getting deep to our students, which is a good thing.
Thank you, Brian. Chief, that's it?
And that's all I have. Um, nothing else I can report on now, um, uh, other than our M.D.T.s. Uh, November third, we switched to a new platform with our CAD system. Our previous M.D.T.s had Windows XP, which is no longer supported. So we had to, uh, it was kind of unfunded, but we had to purchase some more M.D.T.s to, uh, jump to the new system, and so far, we're still within budget. And November third, we go to it. And so that, in conjunction with the new phone system and the new radios, everything's coming together in November, so cross my fingers.
Uh, my comment, Chief, on the, uh, uh, class that we're taking right now, um, the instructor we had last Thursday was, was very good.
Uh, Citizens Police Academy?
Yes, sir. Um, who was that? That was, uh.
Tagan Horse.
Pardon?
Dennis Tagan Horse.
Tagan Horse?
Tagan Horse, yeah. Yeah, a very good class, very informative, and for a retender that, uh, was low at the time. Every class that I've attended is, is very educational, um, very informative. I thank the Police Department. Any questions of the chief or myself? I conclude this one report.
Thank you, Public Works, fifty-four.
Water Department, Sewer Department, monthly reports are enclosed for your review. Re-detection update, um, we did have a pre-con meetings last month, when we left those, um, I believe it was the day after our last board meeting here, um, on the last, uh, Monday of the month. We were told that it was approximately about one month out.
Right, I believe they're going to be in, next, I believe they'll be in sometime next week. I know that, um, they wanted us to finish doing our fall flushing, we're in the midst of that. We started it Sunday night, that'll be completed Thursday morning.
Yeah.
So I'm looking sometime next week.
From the pre-con meeting, just so everyone knows, um, he anticipated approximately fifteen days, fifteen working days, um, to re-detect the whole town. So it's a pretty, pretty complicated system, but it was neat to be in the pre-con meeting, and he went over everything. Water main patch repairs and restoration update, um, all the asphalt repairs have been completing, um, waiting on the concrete. Contractor, somebody.
That doesn't even look too promising. What I will say is that there's a couple squares of concrete that we will probably have to do in-house this, uh, Thursday, Friday, when, from an email, after I talk to Mike from Castleton again. These guys are still a good week and a half off with their doing foundations. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Prairie and Row Road.
That's the, the concrete guys, they're, they're scheduled to come in and, and do it.
Yeah.
Yeah? But they're like, Ron, they're, they're, I, I don't know what to tell you about, they're all, they're, they're all backed up, there's, there's been a concrete shortage, believe it or not, and, uh, also, I, I, from what I also heard was that, uh, a lot of the laborers that were in this area doing concrete work ended up down in South Carolina, because there's like an eight-dollar-an-hour, uh, increase in their, um, salary. So that kind of left them a little bit shorthanded here, and everybody's running around.
Thank you.
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Skates system repairs update, um, what do you want to go over? We allocated fourteen thousand, six hundred.
Uh, the fourteen sixteen, it was done, uh, substantially. Most of that was done, um, at the central, at, uh, the sewer plant, where we had to rebuild everything that was, um, from the original skates system. So that go, that went back a good, um, I would say sixteen years. And the other little bit was, uh, when we did, uh, uh, variable drive changeovers to the booster station. And so those, that was the two big things that we took care of. Um, you want me to go into this, tree replacement?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Village to begin tree replacement program. Uh, this year, the village has spent thirty-three hundred dollars on twenty-eight trees of a variety of species. Um, everyone received the list today of the planting list. We have twenty-nine locations. We are having this professionally planted. Um, we've taken down over fifty trees this year. As you know, we can't possibly, budget constraints, replace every tree that we take down when we take it down. But we do need to come up with something where this problem doesn't continue to snowball in the opposite direction. Um, we're going to try to please everyone. We, we are splitting this up. Winter damaged a lot of the newer trees and newer subdivisions in town. You have a lot of ash ore affecting trees in the older section of town. You know, as I'm sure everyone would love to have their tree replaced, uh, but we will be working on this problem. And I think that's just something that we need to address next year at budget time. Again, I don't think there's too much we can accomplish here tonight. We have our budget for this year set, but that is something I think we need to address and look forward to. As we've all known, we've been receiving reports about ash ore since I've been on board in two thousand and eleven. I've received some, and I'm still having with me, so, um, it's not something that's coming at us from out of nowhere. Uh, next, I have considered approval of payment to Central Salt of Elgin in the amount of sixty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-two cents from M.F.T. funds for six hundred and one point three-five tons of rolled salt. As everyone knows, we threw the state bid, um, there was the whole rejection thing, people are not doing this. Big kudos to our administrator, who was on top of the ball, immediately didn't let it go off for a second bid, and found, um, Central Salt supplies with the tonnage that we needed and ordered, and we are actually, from reports of other towns, receiving this at a much less price than others. And if we have it now.
It's not out of order, it's in ours.
It's in ours. So I'll make a motion, um, for payment to Central Salt of Elgin in the amount of sixty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-two cents from M.F.T. funds.
Second.
It's a motion on the floor, and I want a second. Any questions in motion? Go ahead.
Clary?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Claire?
Second. Oh, yes.
Just a comment, and then for Public Works, I mean, this is the way the years are going for them. I ordered the six hundred tons, and it comes in, what, three days' budget?
Shit.
And there's four semi-loads to a hundred ton, so it's twenty-four semi-loads of salt they come in front of our salt dome in three days, and we have to push into the, into the dome, so. We've got it now.
But not all, it's, it's.
It did. We got it all.
I thought you put some on.
We have any in town, it's all on.
It's all.
None went out of, into the.
No.
Old, old link to.
That's how much salt we used last year, to give you an idea.
Because I thought you would have had it go on to the.
Well, we kind of creatively packed it in there to begin with, so it's, um, I don't know. We could have probably ended up putting a couple loads out at the link to. But that, there, there was some work that had to be done to the link to anyway, so it, we're fine, we're wonderful, we're just, you know, waiting for the first one.
Two thousand and four truck replacement update. The two thousand and four Chevy has been converted to a short bed stake truck. Um, new pickup has been built, and awaiting delivery, and we're on a date, or just waiting.
Just waiting.
Okay. Truck painting update, um, at the last budget meeting, it was decided to preserve the equipment. We have, we make it last for a few more years. Both mini dumps and F-eight-hundred large dump are authorized to be repainted, uh, repainted, and that work is now complete.
We're going to put decals back on.
Oh, yeah.
At F-eight-hundred? It looks nice, it's brand new.
Uh, it doesn't it?
Yeah.
Next, I have considered a motion authorizing the waiving of bids due to the emergency and order to grind and resurface seven hundred and sixty-six feet of failing roadway at the end of Fairway Drive. Um, asphalt will be closing in a month. We'd like to get this going, in, everything going back to our road plan and everything. It's, it's always been try and wait. Fairway Drive, East End Loop, and our road plan was set to occur next year, um, in, in, in the twenty-fifteen budget, um, and work to be completed in the spring of sixteen. With the winter that it took last year, the potential of the winter that it can take this year, and the number of residents complaints that we've received, we need to get on this this year, I feel. So I'm going to make a motion authorizing the waiving of bids due to emergency and order to grind and resurface seven hundred and sixty-six feet of failing roadway at the end of Fairway Drive in East Loop.
Second.
It's a motion on the floor, and I want a second. Any questions in motion? Go ahead.
Clary?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Okay, consider a motion approving a proposal from Gallagher Asphalt, an amount of thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars for the complete milling of road, binder course patching, and one and a half inch surface overlay to crown and properly drain the road, um, of Fairway Drive. Uh, there's two proposals, enclosed for your review. Does anyone have any questions on it? In the budget, we have thirty-five thousand budgeted for Fairway Drive in case, this, this was always in the budget and, and there in case of an emergency situation, even though knowing that it was planned to be done later. But it is two thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars over the amount that was budgeted for this proposal, um, where we would be using capital reserves in the infrastructure account to get the job done. Does anybody have any questions about the, the work, or the, the two proposals, what they're looking at? I do have the twenty-twelve, um, road plan with the engineer estimates and everything from H.R. Green. Andy, if anyone has any questions?
Well, I'm liking that Gallagher's taken into consideration doing patching of the binder course, which is not normally done, a lot of people just grind it and top it, instead of worrying about the binder. The bigger problem we're going to have is the, the winter, last winter's done a lot of damage on a lot of roads across the Chicagoland area, but the amount of effort that went into this one, that damage was pretty substantial, how far down it went, it went into the binder, which is not normally affected. But this kind of reiterates an issue that, you know, the ex-president Lomond had made, which was, maybe we should be having these roads brought right up to the curb edge, so that the water will drain off. Unfortunately, this section of Fairway Drive, it's not up to the curb. So the water pools there, can't get out of there, and in the wintertime, it freezes and thaws. And as it freezes and thaws, it works its way further down, and at this point, it broke into the binder. Once it got into the binder, it started doing that again, it just keeps working its way down, and it starts popping the road pretty bad. It's, I'm amazed it's gone as far as it did. It's pretty bad out there, so. It's good that Gallagher is looking to work on the binder, a lot of contractors will more of the binder, just grind it and, and, and re-top it, so it's good that they're looking at that. But we do need to get these things up to the, to the curb edge.
There's a couple of things I'd like to point out for everyone on this. In twenty, two thousand and twelve, we had H.R. Green do a road study. At that time, they gave us an engineer estimate of fifteen dollars and sixty-six cents a square yard. They also estimated it being a thousand, and gave an engineer estimate cost of forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. Um, this is significantly less, and when you look at Gallagher's price of sixteen dollars and eleven cents per square yard, and you take into consideration. and eleven cents per square yard, and you take into consideration the inflation, the cost of labor, and the cost of obviously oil, which is a major factor in asphalt. I, I think we're doing pretty good on our pricing here too, considering that this report was done two and a half years ago. And that was the pricing at the time, that was going off the pricing then. It's within fifty cents a square yard. I'm sure Brian can give you a percentage on that, but I, I know it's very minimal. So if anyone, does anyone else have any other questions? If not, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Can we put anything in reserve in case the road does fail again?
Are you talking about holding any money back?
Yeah.
Do we do a ten percent retainer on, on it? I, I don't.
Typically wants the road approved. The engineer would, this is gonna be a non-engineer job.
When we did.
I think Gallagher's reputation, I.
It's, it's pretty, pretty good. And last year, like what Bob just said, when, when we did all the road repairs that we did of the milling and grinding and repaving of, most of the streets were west of the tracks, there was a ten percent retainer and it was done and held by the engineer without doing it through the engineer, as Bob stated, it wouldn't be possible.
I think Gil's referred to a problem he had back in oh six. When your road was paved and ended up getting repaved. We won't pay him until the committee's happy with the work. That means Brian and Jonathan have a lot of danger.
So at this time, I'll make a motion approving a proposal from Gallagher Asphalt in the amount of thirty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty dollars for the complete milling of the road, binder course patching, and one, one and a half inches of surface overlay to crown and properly drain the roadway, the Fairway Road at the east end.
Second.
It's a motion on the floor and a word of second. Any questions or comments? For call.
Mary?
Yes.
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 Myers?
Yes.
Eric?
That concludes my report.
I can have the volume first.
The following newsletter was recently mailed to the residents and a great job putting it together, Jeanette. And I really enjoyed the newsletter this time. There's a lot of useful information in it, I got it great. New website updated to be provided tonight. I know Jeanette emailed us links to the new website. Do you have any more information on what's gonna go live? Or do we have any major changes? Because all the changes we can make ourselves at this point. We want to add some photo galleries and things like that. It's gonna take some time and we need to get into our new building before I can take on another new project right now. So I'd like to, it's gonna take, when we okay it through the website designer, it'll take twenty-four to forty-eight hours to go live potentially with the whole switch over. So if the board doesn't have any objections, I was gonna try and make it go live by the end of the week.
I think it looks great. I think it's great.
I, I pulled up both, both web locations. You, there's a huge difference. So the one I said, what does Creeks look like? Creeks looks like our old one. Peatones does too. This really looks, sets us apart. I think it looks great.
We find new sign updated.
I'm sorry.
We find new sign updated?
No, 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 no. I'm, no, I'm not, no, I was.
Good action.
Another reason.
That's on the project list.
Yeah. It's on the list. We, uh, we still have to figure out financing and the fine lines that we want to do. This is kind of gonna be on the back burner over the winter. Public Works is overextended at the moment. There's street signs to put up and when winter comes, it's probably not something we're gonna be able to do. So by spring, we will have pricing available, by the decisions on signs, we'll be able to put something up then.
Just so the board knows, we have, how many poles, street name poles we haven't put up yet? We haven't reacted to that yet?
Right. You know, that's just another one of those.
Two phases of the street name replacement program. We gotta get on this chase and get the whole.
So it's ongoing, but we will come up with it. This is, we pretty much got it done, we don't know where it's gonna go, just a matter of getting it started. Bernard Welding Sewer Extension update?
Yes, they have been offered to the farmer, to property owners. The farmers are busy right now harvesting, and I told them to reins, there will be a discussion on that offer because of bridges. But there has been offer.
Enterprise Zone update. There are two major issues that the board needs to focus on with the Enterprise Zone application. The village has to offer its own package of incentives and the baseline for this across the zone is a fifty percent property tax reimbursement for a period of five years for all new construction and expansions. There are logistical issues with this, but it can work. And what are logistical issues?
The tax rates of the various municipalities in the zone are different. And we got into a discussion, some towns have fire tax levies, some towns have separate geobody levies and outdoor operating levy. So to find what you rebate, and someone brought up the fact that you cannot rebate the township road bridge levy because you have no control of that. Those are the logistical problems. Ours is simple. We have corporate levy and, and we have, you have nobody that do the fair zone line. And it's only for those, and that's another clarification, that applies enterprise and see Enterprise Zone status. So not every project in the zone is going to hit a tax break, only those that seek that certification. So you gotta do a big project to make it go through.
Bob, what's the difference? Can you tell us what's the differences between enter, Enterprise and TIP?
Enterprise Zone is a state incentive program where they agree to waive all the sales tax on the building materials for the project. The state utility taxes waived, the local sales taxes waived on building materials as well. I don't know where these people buy building materials, you won't have to pay them over. They get the property tax incentive, we have to do the incentive. I believe that's the next one we're talking about. For building, it's just to incentivize them to expand their business or to build new buildings. It's not really gonna help anyone who's in existence. You know, we have, if, if Art Van Barren were to build his factory in Enterprise Zone, not only would his building materials be qualified for this sales tax exemption, but all of his equipment that he buys to put in his building, mixers and lenders and what have you. There's big savings there. He also doesn't have to pay utility tax on that large operation. As long as the Enterprise Zone is in existence, I believe it's a twenty-year zone.
And it could be just an individual business? It doesn't have to be like a certain area?
It could be, but the amount of paperwork you have to go through to get eligible for this, you, you probably have a kind of detriment of a hundred thousand.
The second incentive is fifty percent of any building permit or zoning fee. Since independent inspections get seventy percent of the fee, the village would be on a total of twenty percent or about fifteen cents per square foot. Sixty thousand square foot building would cost the village about seventy-two hundred dollars, since we would cut the fee to the building to eighteen thousand, but would be contractually bound to pay independent inspections twenty-five thousand two hundred. If tap and fees were included, we could waive fifty percent of those as well, and the remainder cover the loss in the building permit.
I, at the meeting, they said that those municipalities that have direct costs of outsourcing, the building permit covered, they're only asking for half of the village administration. Nice and glad it's a finer mark. They said, that's fine, you just have to offer something to make it stay open. So we're really not gonna be out a lot of money with this incentive program. And by the way, we're gonna have to adopt ordinance, the government agreement, probably the second meeting. There's gonna be a public hearing on this thing at Sock Village City Hall on November third, two weeks.
You can bring this up there, I'll go.
Uh, I don't know if it's on the agenda or not, is it correct? We can, but already young.
Same, it's, it's a key issue you wanna have them understand.
Yeah, but it's not a tip. This is a Enterprise Zone status. They're exempt from certain state and federal taxes and fees by being in that zone and willing to invest in it.
Consider a motion authorizing the village attorney to create an ordinance providing for a fifty percent property tax reimbursement of the village's corporate levy for a period of ten years for any new industrial building exceeding thirty thousand square feet. We talked informally with representatives of some of the various taxing bodies, and one of the problems you have attracting new industry and commercial development is a lack of an incentive to give them when they first come in. When, when these users go in different towns, they have things that are written up, they hand them brochures, they have things that are set in stone where they walk in the door, they can walk out knowing exactly what their incentives are gonna be. When they come to Beecher, we kinda, well, we have to meet with the taxing bodies, we have to think about it, that takes a month or two months. We have to go to client commission, that takes a month or two months. Anybody who really has their ducks in a row is can be long gone by then. They basically wanna come in, make their decisions, time is money, they don't wanna kind of play around figuring out what you have to offer. And there's an awful lot of competition out there. There are areas that have TIP districts, there are others who don't, but they're willing to go the extra mile, whatever it takes, to get industry into their town. So it's, it, we do not have a competitive advantage if we don't have ideas ahead of time as to what we'd like to do.
Well, what are the other towns? You know, because you said that they were handing them something and giving them incentives. Do we know what those aren't?
Yeah, T-Mile does one.
Creeks.
Creeks.
Low.
It's low.
And it's fifty percent property tax over ten years.
They're using TIPS though, so. So they're getting basically a hundred percent of what they paid, goes in the TIPS trick. And then they get some of that back for their investment. So it can't, it's not apples to apples because we don't have TIPS. But we figure we have to offer something when they come knocking on the door. We just can't say, yeah, we'll consider, we gotta get to the taxing bodies, I find out what you wanna do. We'd just like to say a blanket, here it is, this is what we're willing, and maybe the other taxing bodies can follow that.
Basically, the, this is a marketing tool. And we actually experimented with the idea with the Art Van Barren request, with the taxing bodies. Had a discussion with that, and this is what's prompting this so that they were in agreement. It's basically a simple marketing tool.
And there wasn't a lot of pushback. I mean, the other taxing bodies were actually pretty open to it.
Do you think that there's gonna be a turnover every two years, every four years because you have different people in there?
Well, that's why we wanted to put this in to some kind of legislation, so it's there. And that's, that's one thing that, Scott, that's one thing I kind of brought up is, you know, what happens if somebody comes in and they get it after five years and leave? I, I think what we're doing here is, if you read closely, it's for any new industrial building exceeding thirty thousand square feet. I think if that potential business is willing to make the investment of coming in and putting up an industrial building of third, the size of thirty thousand square feet, the cost of that building versus what they're gonna be rebated on the village's portion of a fifty percent tax rebate is miniscule. I don't see a business coming, walking away from a business in five years saying, if you're not willing to renegotiate my fifty percent tax rebate, I'm gonna leave. I mean, you're talking, and that, that's one thing I, I thought about, and then I read more clearly, it's, you know, this is for new industrial buildings, they're putting up thirty thousand square foot industrial building. You're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're talking about a fifty thousand dollar rebate potentially over five years. That's not what's gonna keep them here.
Yeah, this is a sizable, people that are making a sizable investment that are not gonna be just running off in a few years.
And with that size, when you think about the property value increase, it's a substantial amount that right now, if you had that property that could, that could take a thirty thousand square foot building, let's say there's a thousand dollars of tax on it, maybe even two thousand, the tax on that thirty thousand dollar building is gonna be a lot more than that. So even if you give them fifty percent back, you're still making the taxes if nothing was ever done on that building and then some. What you're giving up is the full potential, but you're giving that potential to get them in here. And that's, and, and even today, you heard the, the auditors say, our EBA is down and we're going down. We need to start incentivizing the village of Beecher. Right? And you've got other people at better corridors that can pull business in. We really don't have that. That's the biggest problem.
I got one question pretty much. Is it ten years or five years?
Yeah, it's.
Oh, I think it's fifty percent for ten, five years?
No, it's ten years.
But it's five percent.
You know, we've been talking five years, we've been talking five years.
No, we have ten years.
It's ten. You gotta make it worthwhile. And it's property tax, so if the scenario that I say, let's say that piece of property is giving you a dollar right now.
I, I understand the whole fifty percent of something that's better than a hundred percent.
I'll give you ten bucks, you'd be fine.
I'm just wondering if.
Why wouldn't you do that?
That's long.
If, if that's long, do we need to go that long? What are the other towns doing? Because, I mean, just for instance, the one issue that we're talking about right now is only a five year. But yet, we're coming to look at an ordinance to drive for a future for other potential people for ten years.
Oh, the Enterprise Zone is five. And that's where the confusion is, okay. Yeah, right. For a building of that size, thirty thousand square feet, I'd go ten years for fifty. We did for Art. In fact, we did it for Art three times. And I know he paid sixteen, we give me back.
Well, I guess if you take it to the point, you're gonna, you're gonna initiate an ordinance to go to a, to a ten year fifty percent, but you're gonna go into an Enterprise Zone and I get fifty percent for five.
No, no, that's the base. We could go fifty percent for ten on a building of that size. The guy's ten thousand square feet, he only gets the fifty for five. If he gets Enterprise status. That's kind of like the base. Now I see where the confusion is.
So you're saying if the guy goes in thirty thousand square feet, it's a large building, therefore you're going longer. Someone with a smaller one, you're going with five.
Yeah. This would not, this would be, because we had some of the taxing bodies that had issues with the fact that they may be built and didn't get incentives, and I don't think we had anybody that would have met this qualification that had been skipped.
No.
Everyone was.
I think I'm looking for your recommendation. You're the one that's researched other towns and stuff like that. If you feel that's what we need to be competitive on, on your side, so.
Yeah.
It's just kind of a general question. I'm not questioning that it's wrong. If that's what we need to be competitive, I mean, this is your area. I mean, I trust you on that, so.
Why would we only be for a restaurant? What about, you know, the big box retail?
If, maybe I can answer that, Pete, and hopefully this does answer your question. We were very careful in presenting it and by saying that we understand that certain things could have devastating effect. And then, for instance, if we went to, I mean, I realize we're only talking commercial, but let's say we did something for, for an incentive for a residential area that affects the school. Big box or a big chemical plant could affect the fire department. So, uh, and, and the, the big box store that came up, and I don't remember specifically.
We were concerned there's so many potential of commercial uses for a building of that size could really affect the ability, if not only another taxing body, but the building itself, to cope with that. So we're not, we're not saying no, we, we would be open to discuss incentives, but we're not going to agree to some blanket incentive for a commercial building of that size because we might say, you know what, we want the property tax, we're gonna do the sales tax. There's other options with a commercial building than you have with industrial building.
Basically, they were sensitive about the incentive.
Yeah.
And even as far as retail, when we talked about that, we wouldn't, we wouldn't wanna upset the apple cart by bringing something in that would potentially shut down something else in town or negatively impact other businesses.
That is another problem, yeah. What if another restaurant came in and they wanted to compete with our restaurants and they wanted a tax break? That could be really, the industrial guy usually wouldn't compete with somebody in town. That, right, you're right, that was the other reason.
Yep. And if you bring in big box retail, sometimes you've got a, a ton of employees and now you're bringing people in.
Walmart.
Yeah, exactly. And then you're affecting school districts or.
Yeah, what would Walmart do to down Jingle Docks?
On top of that, you also, you also incur additional work by your personnel.
Correct.
That industrial complex really doesn't do.
We, we would be open to discussing it, but we're not gonna be bound by ordinance provided in that case.
But no, I think this is, we're not exactly turning people away now, so it'd be nice to be able to attract people.
In the last twenty years, there's only two buildings in town that were qualified for this work, children's plus industrial. To give you an idea of the size.
So I'd like to make a motion authorizing the village attorney to create an ordinance providing for a fifty percent property tax reimbursement of the village's corporate levy for a period of ten years for any new industrial building exceeding thirty thousand square feet.
Second.
Motion on the floor, and a motion to second. Any questions or comments? For call.
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Caprowski?
Yes.
Yes.
Weyland?
Yes.
And that is my report.
There is an intergovernmental meeting, October thirtieth, seven fifteen, which is this Thursday, and this is the year. Wants to attend, please do so. Legislative breakfast update. Basically, there was a lot of discussion, primarily about the fire departments. Firemen asking for consolidation of fire departments laws for that, and also a minimum manpower, and that in particular, it doesn't really affect us because we're a fire district, but a lot of the towns have their own fire departments. They're going for a minimum staffing bill, which would have a devastating effect and mandate that they have so many people working at a certain time, even though they may not have the funds to do so, or even though they may have to steal funds from everybody else. Bob, you can explain Senate Bill sixteen better than I can.
Yeah, Senate Bill sixteen is, is a Robin Hood bill where they're gonna play with the school funding formula for state aid, take from the rich and give to the poor. It sounds like a good program, but the amount of disparity that occurs when they apply this formula is ungrateful. And, and for example, the Beecher School District, as a result of Central sixteen, will lose four hundred eleven thousand on day one. And for that reason, we have to be opposed to this bill, because I cannot understand why they would consider Beecher School District below the schools. And they look at the formula and what it would affect, and just don't believe it.
Well, if you just look at some of the schools in there, Crete, ah, where did I find that? Homewood would lose seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Crete would gain four point one million dollars.
Crete Moni School District. Now, there is a district that really didn't watch their finances, and now they're gonna get rewarded with four million dollars. I have to be-
I saw that. I was kind of shocked.
And the reason for that is because all of your property, almost all of it, including Crete Moni School District, is in a TIP district. So that's why they don't get the revenue. So the state's gonna bail them off. I, I would seriously question the formulas that are being applied.
But the other ones that kind of shocked me was that some of these numbers are way up there, 'cause if you look at Cicero District, their school district ninety-nine, thirteen million dollars a game, thirteen million dollars to their bottom line.
Someone has to pay thirteen million to make people.
But then if you go to the bottom and you look, I don't know where Conn's High School District, two thirty's at, but they're gonna lose seven million dollars. So there, there is some substantial changes for it. The biggest problem that I see for our, our school district, and I've always said, you know, people come to this village for two reasons. One, it's a safe area for their kids. Two, the school system. The school district right now is four hundred thousand dollars in the hole. You do this, every year they're losing four hundred thousand dollars. They've already cut as deep as they can. If they start cutting anymore, the junior high was built to have smaller schools, class sizes, no more than twenty-five students in a room. They're jamming them in there, because they only have enough money to have one teacher teaching one of those subjects. And they put more kids in that class, and you can barely get around those classrooms with the amount that they have in there. There's been numerous discussions at board meetings where in the science room, there's not enough equipment for the kids that they have in that classroom, because it was originally designed on a smaller scale. Now we're trying to increase the size of those rooms, and the rooms can't grow. The kids are literally on top of each other. So we need to be conscientious to the situation that the school's going through, because if our school system goes, goes south, you could pretty much put as much money as you want and give to a builder. You will never have anybody come to this town. Your school system looks bad, they will not come. And businesses will not wanna come here. There's no incentive for them.
And we did pass this information on to the school superintendent. I don't know if he's back.
Yes, he said we are. So we can discuss this if you're available.
Go. Course update. I believe the only correspondence we had was that, again, it still is on a positive note. I believe they are closer, but we have not heard anything more recent. So the deal is still alive as far as we know. And it sounded very positive, but we have not had any final word yet.
One comment. Did you want us to make a motion concerning Senate Bill sixteen and the position?
If you want to make a motion passing a resolution in opposition to that, we can draft it for next meeting.
Right. I make a motion, right?
Motion, second. Questions or comments?
Welling?
Yes.
Yes.
Caprowski?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And November twelfth, at Baltimore Park Race Track, at four to, between four to seven P.M., there is a public meeting on the three ninety-four and Route one corridor study. There's a presentation at four thirty, and there's a presentation at six o'clock. Since it's close by, if you have the time, please do so. Attend this public meeting. I believe it's similar to the one that we've had in the past for-
You're gonna get a lot more information this time. You're gonna see the roundabout, the proposed for U. L. A. in Route one.
Of course.
Bob, you sent us an email on that, right?
Yeah.
Where's that at, Greg?
Oh. If you want a carpool, leave the village hall.
What date is that?
September number twelve.
We'll leave the old village hall at three thirty.
Is that right?
With that, that's all I have.
I have a couple items, Mr. President. Just this afternoon, I received notice that our workman's compensation insurance bill going up by fifty-five thousand dollars because of the claims that we had. This, this bill will be due in thirty days, and I've already talked to the chair of finance. We are gonna have to claim the money that's in our existing budget to pay that. I have home money, but it's a matter of whether that may be concurrent or not, so they want to proceed to pay that bill off. If we don't use the existing light items in our budget, we'll supplement our appropriation, because I can waive the magic wand, but I can't waive one for fifty-five grand. I can do it for two thousand dollars in trees, but I can't do it for fifty-five. So we're gonna have to do something in the next thirty days to figure out how to fill that bill. And again, this is out of our control. This is something that we have open control. The tax levy, oh, and the fire financial plan, we accommodated for this increase, so I've got it covered for the next four years. It's just this year we did the signing of the budget, but we will have this increase in the workman's comp insurance covered in the next four.
We didn't see that coming.
Yeah, you're right.
Not, not to this level.
You can't see it coming, because you don't know what the claim status is of these workman's comp. You know, I mean, you have no say in a settlement. They just settle the case, and then you're notified, this got charged to your portion of the self-fulfillment pool, because we settled for this amount of money. And it's all through state statute how they proceed with these workman's comp. And it's the biggest and costlyest insurance in the state zone for any employer. Tax levy. We're getting ready to prepare the tax levy for next year, and I'm prepared to draft a zero percent increase in levy. That's something you guys wanna do again? It's maybe the last one, but we can do it again.
Can you make it work?
I can make it work this year. I can't guarantee it next year, but this year I can.
We always do these levies year by year anyways.
That's correct. We made it kind of a two-year commitment last year, 'cause I had minutes in a finance committee meeting where we said we would try to do it for two years. I don't know if I can do it next year. Also, in December, we're scheduled to have two readings, and I'm reading schedule process. But it's up to the board if you wanna do both pay bills and have some committee reports. I need the December, and then cancel on the twenty-second. I don't think anyone wants to have a board meeting three days before Christmas. It's entirely up to you. I don't care what's up to you guys, what you might want to do.
I say, have the one meeting.
So I would think cancel the one closer to Christmas.
And then we will just do what we have to do on the eighth, pay bills and do anything that can't wait until January. So don't we need official committee reports in December? We'll call the monthly season. No, no, we'll wait till January, because you guys get your monthly's done by the eighth of December. You guys do the monthly's.
Usually.
You stay after the month.
Usually we do.
Just have a football meeting up here, stay up on that.
On the eighth. All right, but it'll be two weeks after a football season, which there'll be-
Do we need to make a motion canceling that meeting?
There'll be the December twenty-second board meeting.
That'll be a trip. But we'll be right on that. It'll be on the next agenda, so.
Yeah, we can do that.
That's it. You want to eat back?
Oh, I need these back, 'cause I only got a couple dozen.
Just one question. Does anybody wanna go to the new village hall for a tour?
We're going there now.
Everybody, you're going to the new village hall for a tour. If anybody would like to go, please meet us there. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.